On behalf of the board, I'd like to welcome all students, staff, parents, and interested community members to tonight's Board of Education meeting. I'd like to remind everyone that this is a meeting of the Board of Education held in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is time for public comment during the meeting in the public participation section on the agenda. We do have an amendment to the agenda, so I just want to read this. We have a resolution to amend the personal consent agenda, item D, to add the employment of Dmitry Isikov as girls' head soccer coach for the 2023-2024 year pending background check. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Placko?
Something was missed on the agenda. Came in, realized after the 48-hour deadline that it changed.
Laura Krasinski?
Aye.
Belinda Grassy?
Aye.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Jennifer Arden?
Aye.
Laura Krasinski?
Aye.
Belinda Grassy?
Aye.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Jennifer Arden?
Aye.
Laura Krasinski?
Aye.
Belinda Grassy?
Aye.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Jennifer Arden?
Aye.
Motion carrying. Make a motion to improvements as attached, so March 23, 2023, April 13, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? Placko, can you call the roll?
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Jennifer Arden?
Aye.
Laura Krasinski?
Aye.
Belinda Grassy?
Aye.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Jennifer Arden?
Aye.
Motion carrying. Make a motion to improvements as attached, so March 23, 2023, April 13, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? Placko, can you call the roll?
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Jennifer Arden?
Aye.
Laura Krasinski?
Aye.
Belinda Grassy?
Aye.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Motion carrying. That brings us to special reports.
You got no special reports tonight.
Brings us to the discussion of old business. I did not, I don't think we received anything in old business. I think it's new pending.
I think I had discussion of the history of the board on old business.
Okay.
So it didn't have to be on there, I can speak anyway, so. So I want to make a statement which is, I believe we as a board can do a better job of serving our constituents in this school district. We can do a better job of working together and do a better job of getting things done. We have done some good things. Mr. Heck brought a resolution to help the students' safety and had passed 5-0. Mr. Heck also consistently says we're in the business of education, which I agree with 100%. And I believe we're moving more in that direction, working on the Curriculum Committee. I see some forward movement there. We have also consistently had 5-0 votes on hiring SROs and sheriff's deputies, and we're now just about 100% staffed in our buildings. What's not so good was putting up a Bonlevy on the ballot with a 3-2 vote, with all good, against all good reasoning, which got destroyed by the voters, and that cost us a year of valuable time delaying the process of upgrading our buildings and is costing us money because inflation is eating away at our purchasing power as we delay. Also, before I was voted in, the social emotional learning program called Responsive Classroom was purchased, and then the training took place in May and November of 2021 and then implemented into this school district. The unfortunate, one unfortunate part about that is the parents still have not received notification by email that this program is in our school district. Another not so good board action was hiring NV5. They've done nothing but waste our time and money. We should really reconsider NV5. When the new schools were built, Riverview and Parkside, the board did not hire an owner's agent. As a result, when the roofs leaked, we had to pay thousands of dollars to a local roofing company because the roofing company that installed the roofs is based in Indiana, and they wouldn't come here to honor the warranty. Another result was when the two boilers broke down at Riverview and Parkside and we had to dismantle them and get them fixed, and then had to send the faulty parts to a company in Canada because they wouldn't come here. Another item is the $4 million the board spent on upgraded windows at Riverview and Parkside. I've done extensive research by talking with law enforcement from police officers to the sheriff's department, to a guy that was in national intelligence who worked at the Pentagon and trains SWAT teams. It's about a 50-50 on the idea of the upgraded windows. So on a 50-50 split in opinions, it probably wouldn't have been warranted, it probably wouldn't have been warranted to spend the additional $4 million. That's a lot of money that we could utilize. So I believe we can do a better job of serving the district and our constituents by being wiser with our actions and wiser in how we utilize the hard-earned tax dollars of our constituents. I believe what it comes down to is this: the board being more willing to work together to make better decisions that will benefit the students, staff, administration, and our constituents. So I would urge the board to work better together.
So, Mr. Fishel, I guess, I do have something I want to respond to with that, is that we've sat here as a board, and we've discussed processes on how we will work together as a board, and you consistently, consistently go outside of those practices. For instance, when we sent out a quest for old and new business, it's supposed to be sent to the entire board so that we can come to this table and have discussion, because that's what needs to happen, and that's what you're saying you want to do, but you don't do it. So I guess, how do we work together if you're unwilling to follow some of the processes and procedures that we said we would operate under to make sure that we're doing those things and that we are working together? Instead of coming to the table, making statements that none of us here have been prepared to go back and look at some of these statements. For instance, last week I said, or last month, I said, hey, what do you want, what feedback do you want to give to NV5? You came up with nothing, nothing, but to say how your decision was right and the rest of us are wrong. It's a constant, no evidence, but I'm going to go ahead and bash everything that's been done. But you give no evidence to how you back that up. And again, we have set parameters, how we work together, but you don't do it, but you want us to work together. So I guess I need to understand, how does that happen?
Well, about NV5, I've spoken publicly about the eight mistakes they had in their presentation, how they utilized the same information that was used in the Bonlevy. They gave us five different iterations of that same information, and I've said this publicly with everyone here. And then they said at the end of that presentation, don't submit any of these to the public because they won't pass any of them, okay? So what we got was, basically, if a school teacher was grading that presentation, it would have been an F. Eight mistakes in a presentation that was about an hour long and gave us no new information that we could work with, okay? And I said that publicly.
Right, and I said, what do you want to go and give them? And you said nothing. So you did not want to take it back to them.
Yeah, can I ask you a question? So you're reiterating a lot of the things that you don't like, but what solution are you bringing to the table so that this board can have a conversation about what it is that you would like to see us do to work better together? I don't want to keep rehashing the things that you're not, that you don't like. I'd like to know if you're going to, during old business, and you're saying old businesses, we need to work better together, what, how, what do you propose? What does that mean, so that we can have that?
Well, I think we need to make wiser decisions. Putting a Bonlevy up in the middle of an inflationary timeframe, when the money wouldn't have been enough to finish the schools anyway, on a 3-2 board vote, wasn't a good idea.
So that, again, is just rehashing the things that you didn't like about what we've made decisions about in the past. You're saying you want us to work better together, then how are you proposing that we do that? What are you asking us to do going forward?
I think we need to gather the information more completely, and I think we need to consider it more completely before we make decisions. So I think better decisions can be made. Maybe you don't think so, maybe you would not change your mind with more information or better information, but I think as a board, we should work towards that.
We had a lot of information, we had a lot of discussion that was brought to the table and was considered. So because we didn't agree to you, agreeing with you doesn't mean that we didn't consider all that. So again, this is about we did not agree with you, and we're allowed to do that. And we had a lot of information we considered, so you can't, we just have a different opinion, and that's going to happen.
And so what I'm saying is, when we make the wrong decisions, it's costing the taxpayers' money, and it's costing us time, and it's costing us not getting things done.
So it's a wrong decision, it's your opinion that it's a wrong decision. Again, I'm just trying to get to the bottom of, if you want us to work better together going forward, what is it that you're bringing to the table that you would like us to do? And if you're saying you would like more information on things, I think our administration can do those kinds of things, but we make the decisions based on the information that we're provided, and I believe that most of the information we've always been provided has been good information.
So I'll give an example. We have a very simple process here that could be underway, but it's not. Okay, you don't need an engineer's report to replace lights.
Okay, again, this is your opinion.
So what I'm, I'm not finished. So what I'm saying is, there can be a plan that's laid out, it can be scrutinized, it can be looked at, engineers can look at it, other professionals can look at it, and we can decide on a path that moves forward that actually gets things done. Unfortunately, what's not been done is any improvements to the buildings today. Okay, now, there is, there is one thing that got done. The lighting in the gymnasium got changed to LED, and that was done without an engineer's report.
You're correct, and we should not be in the business of lighting. We have a maintenance instructor that is in the business of making those improvements for us, and he's doing that. He has a plan.
But I'm just going to go back to what your, what your point here is with that comment is, we are reviewing that information in Buildings and Grounds. I'm not exactly sure what you're saying is any different than what we are already doing in our committee, which we have information on this evening. I'm not sure what you're getting at. We've decided as a board to move forward with a proposal on RFQ, we put it out, like we've decided as a board to do that. So you don't like that decision, so we don't work well together? I'm confused.
Yeah, I didn't say that, okay? We agreed as a board to go ahead and create a list of things that needed to be done. What I'm saying is, in the process of the last year-plus, we have not done maintenance on the buildings that we could have been doing because we were making the decisions to hire companies to tell us what to do, and when they did that, it wasn't worth anything. Okay, so the frustration is, without taking the information from people that know about what needs to be done and how it could be done, and saying, no, we don't want to do that, we want to hire a big company to tell us what to do, it caused us delays, and it's costing the people money, and it's costing, well, teachers here last year, when I was looking at the, at the rooms, were complaining about how their windows didn't work. And I was saying, yes, that's a simple thing, we can replace windows. So I brought information and showed how we could do it, and it was turned away, and my frustration is, nothing is getting done. So maybe something will get done in another year, and that would be good and positive, and the board working together to vote for the RFQ and have the engineer's report is a good thing. What I'm stating is, it's a slower process than what could have been done, and maybe we could work a little bit better together to get things done in a more expedient manner.
I'm sorry, I'm just still confused. We have agreed for one to, for, like, this board, I don't even know what the vote was, we agreed to move forward with putting out an RFQ, that is exactly what we're doing, but yet you want to, like, do things now. We've agreed that we are going to take this information. I'm just confused, I'm just really confused. I'm just confused.
And I think, Mr. Heck, I guess, from a Buildings and Grounds perspective, I believe things come to you, you get reports of what's being fixed, what's being updated, but I think to make smart decisions, we need to understand everything there so we can prioritize. But things are being done, correct? I mean, our maintenance department's not, they're doing things, right?
That is, that is absolutely, that is true. We are, we are doing maintenance, and I, I mean, I get the, I get what you're saying, and I agree that at times, large organizations can seem to move forward more slowly than you would like, and I agree. But, but, you know, in some of the things you bring up, I agree with, but, but as, as we discussed offline before, there, you know, the frustration you have, I get, but having come from a background where I've worked for large organizations, this is how organizations that are, which are large, make decisions. Does it take more time than you would like? Potentially, yes. But ultimately, you know, especially when it comes to paying, using taxpayer dollars, the processes with regard to the buildings, I can't disagree with. I agree with you on NV5, that ultimately was not, I don't believe, it proved, it proved useful ultimately, long-term. I did vote in favor of hiring NV5, because I'd give him a chance, but, but I think going forward that there might be another way of working with an owner's rep that would be useful. I believe we actually did have an owner's rep during the building, construction of the elementary schools. He was more of an attorney than he was owner's rep, but we did have somebody involved in the process. And they, you know, and there's a, there's a judgment call. The other thing with regard to the windows, which, you know, certainly I was on the board and voted for them, there was another gentleman who was on the board at the time who had a, he was a law enforcement, he was a state trooper, and he was very much in favor of the windows as well. And so it's a judgment call, he was in favor of them, we went through a lot of questions, but it's a judgment call. We chose to do it. I don't think that we're necessarily worse off, but as you say, it's, it's a, from a, from my money perspective, it is an opportunity cost.
That's one thing I wanted to mention, too, but wasn't formally noted.
I actually, the actual cost of the change order upgrade from the gymnasium to level three was $181,000, $181,767.37 per building. So that was the change order, so $363,000.
Which is a very small price to pay, considering the quality of the windows that we've received. I mean, I would say that if you talked to parents in Uvalde, Sandy Hook, and Nashville, they probably would wish that they had these types of windows in their schools. And I, and I think, and I told this to Gary, I'm not going to be here very long, but any type of plan going forward, if you want, my recommendation is that you continue to upgrade our buildings using those safety protocols, which would include those windows.
So we can't talk about it here because it's a safety issue in public. You would have to go to executive session as to respond to that from the people with whom I've spoken. Mr. Kalis, you had told me, when you originally showed me the video of the windows, that they were a $2 million upgrade for buildings.
I never said $2 million, absolutely not.
That's, that's what I remembered. So if it's not that...
In fact, before you said a number, I said, I said $180,000, that's what you said. I never said $2 million.
So, yeah, if it's not that, I misunderstood, so.
But I guess the point at the end of the day, why are we looking backwards? It's done. Instead, we should be talking, and we should be discussing at this table how we move forward. And again, you brought it up, and I guess Mrs. Grassy said it, we're trying to do that, but it's not working. So you tell us what you need for us to all work together, because we're trying, but it doesn't seem like we're following what we want in place.
It might have been a discussion you had about the high school.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what it was. Not at elementary. Elementary for $181,000 per building.
Okay, so maybe that was the two grand for the high school.
It was a high school.
So that's, that's what I remembered. So anyway, whenever you do anything, you look at what your, what your history is, and you look at your present, and you hope to see the future a little bit. And if you don't learn from the mistakes that you make along the way, you'll never get any better. That's why we want to look back to see what we've done.
I get it, I do after-after reviews at work all the time. I get that. But windows and stuff right now, like, we're trying to figure out how do we move forward, and also it's a discussion, but again, we may not agree with you. So they'd be a day, it's going to be, you guys made a wrong decision, we made our decision what we felt based on the information. That's going to happen. You can't say because we made a decision and we don't agree with you, that we didn't do our research, we didn't look into it, we don't understand. I think everybody sitting here are, we're pretty intelligent people, and I think we can take in information and critically think for ourselves and process it, and we may not agree with you.
That's okay, all right.
But it's not, because every time that happens, you bring it up here saying how we did wrong, and we should be looking forward, we should be talking about it. If you want to talk about an after-after review, then we can do that. How were those windows wrong at that school? Right? And we start talking about windows, let's hash it out and disagree and figure out what the solution is. But sitting here making statements at this table when we should be discussing, we should be thinking about the future, we're wasting time, we're just reacting, the same thing.
Well, what we've wasted is a lot of money and time, okay? And so I agree with you, we have wasted a lot of money. And so the information has come to the table, it's come from the people that work in these buildings, the teachers specifically, that the windows are a danger and a risk, and they're not safe. Okay, they should have been replaced a long time ago, okay? Why we're going through a long process to replace a simple window is nonsensical. You don't need a big engineer's report to replace windows.
I don't disagree, but if we tell you we want to replace them with a safety glass, what are you going to say?
Now, what kind of statement is that?
Well, I'm asking.
We're going to put all the information on the table, and we're going to look at it. Okay, whatever that information is, you go and gather all the information, you gather the experts, okay, and you get information. That's what I did, I went and I researched the experts, all the way to a Pentagon official.
But I'm just going to check.
Okay, this is an intelligence official, excuse me, I'm not finished, Ms. Grassy. And so when you gather all the information and you put it on the table, you can make a better decision. If we're just talking with ourselves and we're not talking with the experts, then we only have our own information. So what I'm saying is, when you go outside and you get expert opinions, you probably should listen to them a little bit. Now, what we're doing right now, which we agreed to do, which Tom Heck had initiated, was go ahead and get an engineer's report so we can have a laundry list of most important to least important, and go ahead and start to execute those, and we all agreed on that. I think that's a great move. So we at least will have something we can work from, but up until now, we've not done any of that.
We went with the Lake County Sheriff's Department. By virtue of, obviously, we have the video of how well these windows perform, Larry Harvester are there as well, and we also have the fire department's room. We didn't do it in the vacuum, we did reach out to our local first responders.
So again, I'm just going to say, I'm just confused, Mr. Fishel. At the end of the day, we've decided that that is exactly the process that we are following. That is the process that we are, we are in, process of reviewing with the Buildings and Grounds Committee, that was not just one person's decision, it was a decision we'd made it as a board to move forward with that. I'm not exactly sure you want us to replace windows, but you're annoyed because we haven't replaced windows, but you want us to look at all of our options, and our RFQ wants things ranked and wants the engineering firm to do all these things, so you're, like, you can't have it both ways. Like, I'm, again, I'm just going to continue to say, I'm just confused as to what you are asking us to do, we are doing, but yet you want us to replace windows, is that what you're...
Well, that was a pretty wandering statement, I'm not so sure I can understand what you were saying.
Yeah, I guess, again, I'm confused. I'm just really confused by what, what you're getting, Terry. I'm just baffled.
Any additional discussion here? All right, any new business? All right. That brings us to the Board of Education Committee and Liaison Reports. For the Superintendent's Advisory, I do have an update, I'm sorry, I just got to pull it up. We'll be having a Business Advisory Committee meeting, will be May 16th at 7:30 a.m. We are continuing to work on many tasks, internships for students, senior-only hiring fair. Outside of the normal meeting times, we're also working on the profile of a graduate, so that'll be coming soon, hopefully. Begin, we'll pick up that next meeting, May 16th at 7:30. The next report is Curriculum and Programming Committee and Alumni Association Liaison, Mr. Fishel.
So on curriculum, we had a meeting, and we're talking about some, there were 14 teaching candidates that were being looked at. There was also another separate item on substitute teacher where a student teacher who hadn't yet had a degree, a non-degree teacher's for subs, might be looked at. And is Cheryl here tonight? No. All right, it's all right, so, plus she can't speak to that. So anyway, there, what we were talking about is how we were looking for candidates to fill positions and how something might change, where someone might be able to teach not yet having their degree for a short period of time. And probably the biggest thing that, well, two things. One is, the safety officer that's being hired, Alan Ward, is going to just about round out having our buildings completed for coverage with SROs.
Scott, none of that was the curriculum and programming meeting. Like, I was in that meeting, I didn't, that was definitely not our curriculum meeting.
Do I have the wrong page?
I think that was... Because I'm so confused. I'm like, I have no idea what you're talking about.
I don't have my notes in front of me, but we...
Oh, I'm sorry, I've got finance.
Yeah.
I was like, so, I know I was confused, then you came in late, but like, how?
So, so anyway, yeah, I was looking for my notes, because the one thing I was excited about was the GOs program. So Dr. Malacher can talk a little bit about this, but what this is, it's similar to a Hooked on Phonics program, but it's more comprehensive because it goes to all the other needs that we have in the district, the special needs and all of that, and, and so thank, thank you for that. And the cost, if I remember, is $48,000 per grade, and it's kindergarten through third grade, so I rounded it to $50,000 per grade, and so it would be about $200,000 to purchase the books for that. And I know that we were looking at doing a test and maybe bringing in one grade as a test, and, and we discussed it in that meeting, and Ms. Harden and myself agreed that maybe we would look at, look at purchasing all four grades, kindergarten through third, because the results, the data is showing that the results are really good, and similar to Hooked on Phonics, the kids are able to learn the sounds of letters and words, and they have a better comprehension of them after they go through this program. And as everyone knows, that by third grade, if you're not reading well, you don't have as good of an education all the way through. So I thought that that would be an excellent use of dollars to go ahead and purchase for all four grades, which is kindergarten, first, second, and third, and I wanted to put that on the table as an open discussion to look seriously at. So would you have anything to add to that?
Well, I think, I think we're just looking at K2 right now, because we're, we still have some tweaking to do. There is a third grade, we did talk about that, there is a third grade level, but we're not ready to do that because we don't use the foundation programs currently in third grade. So before we would purchase those books, we also were looking at some grant dollars, so before I would bring it to the table, or, you know, or to the board and ask for that purchaser, to Gary, usually, and then he would bring it to all of you. We do have a couple of grant requests out there. It is a pretty big lift, but it is in line with the foundations program that we use, which is our core phonics program. Riverside never stopped teaching phonics, so, but we have seen through some of the training and the science of reading that there are some gaps in the instruction that we have, which is good, that's what we should see, so we think this would be a good complement. And like Mr. Fishel said, we are piloting in a couple of the classrooms, and we're seeing some really good data come out.
And also, Dr. Malacher and I had discussed this last week, and with the grants, we were looking at maybe, would that be a six-month timeframe when we would know if we had the grants or not?
One of them is coming from, is some money that's coming from the state, so we know that, that's kind of a guaranteed grant, so we know there's a little bit of money coming from there that I'd like to put through, towards us. And then I believe it's June where we find out about the other ones. So, I mean, it could conceivably be upwards of $50,000 or $60,000 that we might have to put towards this, and then we could still order and have them and be ready to go in the fall, but we need to talk about what a rollout looks like and that kind of thing, so.
Right, so is this something that would be possible to implement mid-year, or would you need to do it at the beginning of a year?
No, I think if we, even if we were ready to go in June or July, I think when we got them and started working with teachers, I think they would start, they're fairly easy to implement in the classroom, we could start using them and getting the support and kind of do a parallel thing where they start to use them, but we also provide the professional development, so those two things happen, and we get them into the hands of kids, basically, as soon as we could.
Right, and so we've been looking at improving our grades, mainly in math, in like a three-year, three-grade area, and so it's possible that if kids have a better understanding of words, that it might also transfer to math a little bit. And, and so I'm excited about the possibility of increasing scoring with spending this money, and I know it's money, and we can get grant money, whatever we need to spend, I'm all for spending it, and then I think we can take the next step from there and look And then I think we can take the next step from there and look whatever else we need to do to improve those math scores. So anyway, that's a little update on curriculum. As far as alumni, no update right now on alumni.
That brings us to Buildings and Grounds Operations Committee and Legislative Liaison, Mr. Hack.
Sure. So we had a meeting on the, on the nineteenth. And we talked about a number of things. More or less, we are getting ready for the baseball season as best we can. The spring has been kind of wet, but we're doing what we can to get the varsity ball field in place. There was discussion as well, looking at the summer of doing some significant work to the parking lot in LeMouth, excuse me, which I think is going to happen. And it's not on today's agenda, but it's, it's something that we'll move forward on, or at least that will be the recommendation on the Buildings and Grounds. We did spend some time looking at the, those bidders on the RFQ, which was mentioned earlier. There were six, towards the end of March, there was a walkthrough of the buildings in question, which included the campus, the two older elementaries in LeMouth. There were six companies that participated in that. Four of them submitted timely bids. One submitted a bid late, so they no longer, they were not eligible to be considered. And, and so we are moving forward with, because there are a lot of moving parts here. This is gonna be, is I, my best guess is they're going to be, to me, very significant work that's gonna have to be done. So, it's very conceivable that we're going to end up with several different contractors doing specific work, because there's no universal contractor that can do it all. So we are looking at a grid, a matrix, to do a better evaluation. And we will meet in early April to start to go through the process, which will ultimately lead to a recommendation to the board on which of the contractors we believe are best suited to, and this is not to do the work per se, this is to start that analysis. As Mr. Fishel indicated, the RFQ has all of the work that needs to be done. The work needs to be graded from one to five. One is critical, five is, is, you know, in essence, nice to have. And so that's what we're, so, to be clear, and hopefully to be clear, the work that will be done, that we're bidding on, will be a specific analysis, building by building of, here are your, here are things that need to be done, here's the ranking one through five. And then, and then, the next step after that would be, as a board, to determine which of those items, presumably starting with the most highest priority, we would then actually have contracts to do the work. So, a little bit roundabout, hopefully I was able to communicate that clearly. But that's, that's the process. We need to, because there are so many moving parts, and this is not a, it's not a trivial effort. We are gonna sit down and we'll have the matrix, and we'll have a discussion, and it's gonna be probably pretty involved, but we will get through, and then we will make a recommendation. That recommendation, I would suspect, maybe we want to have a special meeting to go over that, because it's a big deal. And rather than trying to cram that into a regular meeting, I think a special meeting would be appropriate, so that we can have the full breadth and depth of conversation possible, so that hopefully we can all come to consensus on what the, what the best answer for Riverside is. And that's my report.
Thank you. We were gonna put a special meeting on the agenda, because we have one set aside for the eleventh.
The eleventh is our placeholder.
Right, thank you.
Because we're, the Buildings and Grounds is meeting on the eighth, I think, in the morning, to review the matrix and to review the rankings that Buildings and Grounds Committee has put together. The administration, we're all gonna, like, do the ranking according to this matrix, and then we're gonna come together and review that information, compile it, and then, I think, the eleventh, we wanted to have a recommendation.
Thank you for bringing that up. I, I don't know, did it go out to the board?
Not yet. Well, the initial draft is, but we're making the few provisions of that.
I'm sorry, the, I mean, the date, the.
I thought it was Buildings and Grounds.
The eighth is Buildings and Grounds.
The eleventh was our placeholder meeting for work.
Yeah, so.
They had a finance meeting.
It's one in the morning.
Right. So definitively, the eighth is when we will get the Buildings and Grounds together and do that evaluation. The eleventh will be that special meeting, which is what I was referring to. Has the rest of the board been informed of the special meeting, or is this?
Not officially. It's down there as a placeholder, but I thought we had that discussion.
You know it now.
So, coming up, update your calendars.
Seven o'clock still?
Um, yes. We, I mean, we can.
No, it's fine, I'm just, I just want to be sure.
We can adjust it earlier. Sometimes we do move special meetings up to, up an hour, but that's when we will.
Whatever you guys want.
The eleventh works, though. I mean, that was the placeholder that made sense, though.
Yeah, I've got that date still at home.
Yeah, I prefer to keep it at seven, just because it's transporting kids to where they need to be.
Seven o'clock it is, so.
Is that eight a.m. or P.M.?
Uh, P.M. That's all we got. Thank you.
That brings us to Policy Committee, Booster Organization Liaison, Mrs. Harden.
On policies, on March 30th, we got the first set of the spring 2023 Neola revisions. Mr. Schlicht just said we should be getting some more, so we'll need to put a meeting on for the Policy Committee meeting in May, so we can go through all of those. We're just waiting for us on the come through. Let's look out for that.
Thank you. Brings us to the Superintendent Report.
I have a lot of people I'd like to recognize today. I had a presentation, I'm sure. We're always talking about showing what our students and our teachers can do. And this, this month, we decided to concentrate on some of those accomplishments over the last couple of months here with some awards, so. We are told to announce that Stacy Lucas and Sarah Tuffs have been nominated for Ohio Department of Education Teacher of the Year. Mrs. Lucas has been with the district since 2000, and she is currently a language arts teacher and a student council advisor at Riverside Campus. Everyone knows Mrs. Lucas, for the many student events she plans throughout the year, along with her, you know, Mrs. McIntyre, we refer to them as a Diane, Diane McDuo. But we, she was nominated for Teacher of the Year, and so was Mrs. Tuffs, who's been at LeMouth School, Middle School since 2015, and is a math language arts teacher. Since its inception in 1964, the Ohio Teacher of the Year Program annually identifies exceptional teachers, statewide, celebrating their work in and outside the classroom. And we believe that both of these teachers are certainly worthy of this designation. And we'll update the board once we find out what happens with that nomination. Also, Cam Simpson won the Franklin B. Walter Award. We want to congratulate him. He is actually one of our valedictorians. He also has twenty honors AP and dual enrollment courses. Not only that, he was captain of our varsity football team, a valuable leader amongst the players and coaches. He was Lake County Touchdown Club Student Athlete nominee. He was first-team All-WRC, honorable mention, All District, and New Shore All-Star. And he's also the manager of the Brevet Nation Spirit Store. They held a ceremony in Columbus on April 18th, and I was fortunate enough to be able to travel there and to represent not only Riverside, but also Lake County. It's my understanding that this award goes out to one student per county in Ohio, and he was the winner, Riverside student. Cameron will be attending the Ohio State University, majoring in chemical engineering. We just want to recognize him. We have a trophy for him, but it becomes, it's attached to the ESC, the ESC will actually be given to a member of their board, it's not ours.
Should we have a round of applause and abstention?
Also, we have a Parkside fifth grader, Nolan Hartman, who's recognized at the Lake County Commissioners' Meeting last week for winning the elementary division of the 2023 Clean and Green Lake County Logo Contest. The Clean and Green Logo Contest receives hundreds of submissions from students all over Lake County, and contests to promote recycling. And I'm sure he has inherited some of his artistic ability from his father, who was an art teacher in our district, and has been for over twenty years. And his mother also is Abby Hartman, who is one of our literacy coaches. Again, you already heard this, that we had a senior-only hiring fair. This is another period of events designed to provide opportunity for our work-minded students. About twenty local businesses attended and interviewed seniors who are interested in joining the workforce directly after high school. I was meaning to go down to that, to that event today, and I got sidetracked with something I had to take care of today. But Melissa was there, I don't know if my two cents was up.
Oh, I had two cents, you know that. It was one of those moments where you just realize we really did something impactful for kids today. So Chris Vasic headed up this fair, and he was really pretty adamant. We hadn't done a college and career fair in a couple of years, you know, partially because of COVID. And then in the fall of this year, we kind of didn't get it together with a new principal and stuff like that, so we didn't have one planned for the spring. And he was, was very adamant that this particular group of seniors needed something, because we had not done anything for them. So he kind of put his nose to the grindstone, and Tiffany Foley, our College and Career Readiness Coordinator, helped also. And they targeted about thirty to thirty-five seniors who don't, who didn't yet have a plan for after graduation. And those seniors came down, and it was one of the coolest things I've ever seen happen. Real conversations. One student actually, right there, had an interview with Stara's. They were sending resumes, they were filling out applications. It was really cool to see. So it, it might be a keeper moving forward. Like I said, it was very specifically targeted to students who we knew kind of didn't really know what they were going to do after graduation. And I think we hit the mark with a lot of them, Jeremy.
I may dovetail on that. So one of the things that the board's quickly done over the years is we've advocated for those not going to college to help, to help them make the transition from academics at Riverside into the workforce. And if you've been watching this for a while, you've heard me talk about the great success we've had with the welding lab, and with our partnership with Perry and with Paintsville City. Paintsville City does HBAC, Perry does construction, does carpentry. And, and all three schools send students into those programs. So we have Perry and Paintsville City kids in our welding program, and Riverside kids in the other program. And I think this is an excellent, another excellent step in trying to bridge that transition and, and help everybody get off on the right foot, right? We have lots of, you know, a very high percentage of our student population goes to college, which is terrific. And now we can help everybody who's at Riverside step off as best they can to what's next after, after graduation. So that's very, I'm pretty excited to hear this. Thank you.
It's a great program. A lot of it is born out of the Business Advisory Committee as well, having local industry come in on a quarterly basis and talk about what they see as the needs that students need to have moving forward into the workforce. On, eighth Friday, April 41st, we have the Carnival Family Fun Night hosted by Riverside High School National Honor Society. What you see there is a lot of fun going on in the field house. The Carnival Night was one of several community events that our NHS program hosted this year, and funds raised at these events were donated to the National Multiple Schools Society. Today, we actually have a presentation of a check to the MS Society of four thousand dollars. We wanted to congratulate the students for being civic-minded and taking part in organizing this event and benefiting the people that have MS. We also have the Ohio Lesbian State Conference at the Riverside Campus, April 14th and 16th. It was the largest theatrical event ever hosted at Riverside, the first time a Lake County school has ever hosted a state conference. We had more than nine hundred students, teachers, and professionals and college representatives attending this workshop. The drama club director is Mrs. Poggi, and she really has nurtured this program over the past twenty years, when she took it over as a, as a new teacher. She was, she was around for a couple of years and then took over the program. Year after year, her systems have produced great quality productions. And the students have thrived over the years, whether they're, you know, acting on stage, or performing in the pit, or the crew. The kids really, really enjoy this program. It is really a gem that we have in our district, as a drama program. This is interesting, and I don't really have an explanation for it. We can't. When I heard, when I heard these numbers, I was thinking to myself, that's really kind of odd, but typically, we, in graduation, we have around three hundred and fifty kids graduating and then giving class. Sometimes a little more, sometimes less, but it's usually around three fifty. Well, we have thirty-five sets of twins or triplets in this graduating class, which amounts to ten percent of our class is the twin or the triplet. Why I have it up here is because we actually have a story that's gonna happen on our TV media. Was it WKYC, Nick?
Channel three, yeah.
Channel three. I don't know when it's gonna air, but sometime in May.
I just talked to them earlier today, said yes, sometime later in May. They spent like four hours here on Friday. They brought in all the parents, all the kids. They interviewed probably eight or nine sets of twins and the triplets, and a lot of parents. So there's a couple sets that weren't there, they weren't able to make it. But they're waiting on, Channel three's still trying to reach out to them, and they're gonna get their pictures and stuff like that. So it sounds like it's gonna be a pretty in-depth.
You know what they say, you must spend something a lot of eighteen ninety years ago, right?
Very unique situation. It's hard to pinpoint that enough to be worried. Also, we have kindergarten registration week kicks off on Monday, May 1st. Registration can be completed on our website. If you have any questions, they can call our office, and we'll direct them to where they need to go. And our graduation updates. Graduation ceremony is Friday, June 2nd at 7:00 p.m., Riverside Stadium. Correspondent speaker is a 1999 graduate of Riverside High School. She's current manager of the Lake County's captains, her name is Jen Yorko. And she will be our keynote speaker. Also, I wanted the board to know that this coming, not this Saturday, next Saturday, will be our prom, A6, from 6:30 to 10 o'clock at the Croatian Hall in East. That's, I'm asking you to go. It's like, you need to know that.
Are we invited?
Question. The graduation, we do have rain dates, which are subsequent, or the things after the Saturday, and then possibly Sunday, hopefully to play out good weather. You know, going back to the conversation about the baseball field in rain, we, we had moved one of our home games, softball games, over to Shard, which wasn't real popular for me to do, but the field wasn't playing well, wasn't safe. We couldn't even have your equipment on it because it was so muddy. We're doing everything we can to try to blow the water off of it, and everything's not really working. But we do have rain in the forecast the next six days, so it's not gonna be any better. You know, so we're gonna be working around that. I know there's a lot of talk about the baseball field. I mean, this department has been, has really, it's just that the weather's not cooperating and the conditions out there. We just need to make sure that if we play out of it, it's safe. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. That brings us to Treasure Report, video updates, the plan, it's an audit personnel plan, and strategic plan liaison, Mrs. Ross.
I don't have any report on the strategic plan. We just heard from, about the strategic plan, I believe it was at our last meeting. But the Finance Committee, the Personnel Committee had a meeting on April 13th. Some of the personnel updates were that we have a lot of open interviews. We had open interviews happening for classified staff. We had a personnel and HR department, they attended a job fair in Akron, at the University of Akron, which is for more than just the University of Akron, it's for, you know, all schools to participate for their, their education students. And so that was well-attended. We talked about a need for subs and for flexibility, and so we are moving to, it's on the agenda tonight, more substitute teacher flexibility, that will allow us to hire students who don't yet have their bachelor's degree, but have, have met the requirements for the ODE license, for a teacher's license, which means, you know, seniors that are graduating with an education degree, you know, in the next couple of weeks. But we will be able to hire them as substitutes, so we have that on the agenda. We are moving our substitute teacher platform from the company that we use right now to the Greater Cleveland, yes, like the Kylon County. greater Cleveland, yes, like the Cairo County.
Still through that, they, they eliminate.
Right. It's, it's not, it's not Lake County's ESC, it's, it's the ESC of Northeast Ohio, which is in Cairo County out in Independence. And so they will be handing that, handling that directly for us now instead of through a third party. So I'm not sure, will they, will, will substitutes need to go through an additional registration process or it's just going to seamlessly transfer?
Because ESC of Northeast Ohio is still like the employer of record for them, so for, for the employee and for us, there's essentially no change.
So we talked about that. We discussed our new River View's school safety officer, which will be starting in the fall, if I'm not mistaken. And then we also talked about the need for perhaps having some preschool coverage for some safety there. So we'll be moving forward with talking about that in our next meetings. We talked about technology department staffing, which we have some of those items on our agenda tonight. And then we, we had a brief conversation about the update of central office furniture, which goes kind of hand in hand with the upgrades that we did for the finance department. And that looks fabulous, so it will be a good move. And that's all I have.
Can I ask a question? Quick question. The, the substitutes, are we reaching out then to all the local colleges that have departments of education with those kids that are getting ready to graduate to make those connections with those students?
We can. Right now, we're targeting our current student teachers that we have placed in this way. So knowing that we've already seen them in our classrooms, that's kind of where the hesitation comes is, you know, you don't know the people coming in, you haven't got to see them. These students teaching with us now have been here, if not all semester, all year with us.
Right.
I think, I think part of the Akron job fair, most students in area schools were required to attend. It was like a mandatory part of their last class or whatever, so. What's that?
The noted job for, would you say?
Yeah, it's, it's really large, so hopefully we will have seen a lot of individuals there as well. And that was, I think, early in April.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, just to kind of give you that, see if maybe we talked about the sheriff's office and with the new officer, I heard a new. Although I did have some conversations already with the sheriff's office about getting coverage for preschool. One of the thought processes was to reach out to the ESC Western Reserve, almost a hill of a garden, see if we wanted to split a person, have a full-time person there Monday through Friday and split the cost, or do we just find someone, I don't know, where time, doing two shifts, like a part-time shift in the morning and afternoon. It's, it's two and a half hours a day, so we have a three-hour morning shift and a three-hour afternoon shift. And then getting people that do work in the courthouse part-time as well will come as support. The ESC wasn't interested in splitting officers because of the lack of funding on their part, so we're kind of like the, the part-time two officers splitting, you know, one AM, one PM, just the, you know, you just have a full-time person there on Friday. You know, those students that are, are not Riverside students, we have staff still there, but obviously the building is locked, but you know, essentially things happen when students are there. So we're looking at, at, at possibly getting that and then they're sort of looking into recruiting for that and seeing if they can find someone. Also want to give an update on the vestibule project that we talked about previously, we went out to bid for that. If you recall, we have a Ohio K twelve safety grant that we received a hundred thousand dollars per building. That's a hundred thousand dollars for the campus, a hundred thousand dollars for Luth, a hundred thousand for Buckeye, a hundred thousand for Belridge, that we're going to use towards this, this project. And then also, we're going to rescue it out of PI fund. We had the bid opening on April nineteenth and unfortunately, the bids came in way over the architect's estimate. We only accept bids up to ten percent of that estimate, so we only had two bidders on the project. So we, there's multiple reasons for that. We believe, first of all, I've been bugging the architect that we need to get out the bid sooner because it takes time to order these things. We need to get out the bid till late March or even April. And then to find out, the architect comes back and says, oh, it's going to be like twelve. We turn around and we get these windows and doors and I can tell you that, we should not have bid in January or February. So we believe that the short timeline we're trying to get done during the summer caused some people not to do on the project. And also, because we're using federal funds, almost, in almost all cases, prevailing wage requirements are attached to that. We found out after we did this out that prevailing wage does not apply to that safety grant. We had a few contractors who provided, declined putting in for because of prevailing wage. And then we sat down, went through the scope of the project in detail and eliminated some things that were really not necessary to bring the cost down. So we're going back out to bid in May here. The bid will, it will be open May nineteenth, so I mean, the only lost cost is just putting the legal ad and newspaper at this point. And then seeing when the bids come in, but, you know, now that the prevailing wage is not, not involved anymore. And also, we know that we're not going to be able to bid during the summertime, so we're going to be more flexible with timelines, you know, come into the school year. Some work can happen during, when school's in session, running cable and things like that, but, you know, we have several long weekends where like a OEA day weekend. We have a four-day weekend in November during the election days, and November seventh is the PE day, November sixth. So that's a four-day weekend that we're going to occur, a five-day Thanksgiving weekend, a two-week break at winter break, spring break. So we can kind of get, you know, we, so, or, you know, so we're trying to get done sooner than later, but now that we're not tied to a timeline, hopefully can track more bids and bring the cost down because with the safety grant funds, we have to have, we have to be under a contract by December thirty-first of this year with the funds liquidated paid by contractors nearby September of twenty-four. So we want to make sure we, we meet that timeline as well. So we're going to go out to bid again and I'll give an update in the next four weeks. Hopefully we have a contract on for approval, but we'll wait and see what happens.
So it's not allowed more than ten percent. What percent were they over?
One hundred.
Double.
Architect's estimate was one point three million. The first bid was two million five hundred and ninety thousand. It was the first time I ever had a contractor apologize before I even opened our bid. So they, they knew it was way more than it was estimated. So the new estimate after we reduced the scope and made some adjustments is about two million dollars. So a hundred thousand dollars of grant funds and about one point six for PI.
Do you think prevailing wage is going to affect it that much?
No, I think there's just some of the window replacements that we were doing. It wasn't just the vestibules, it was like at Luth, it was replacing the doors, windows by the gym and what they call the curtain walls in the hallways. Some of those things at Buckeye and Melridge was replacing, like some of the stuff in the, in the addition area that's about twenty, some years old at this point. And just making sure that all the entrances, it knows to be buildings, but at the campus, we, we were building out here at the main entrance, but didn't including our scope just because there's a lot more doors and windows here than that's worth, so. So it was a little disappointing, but we're, you know, it was like, you know, it was disappointing with the, it obviously was not a good estimate from the start and, you know, we made a few things a little differently. We would have known the project would be that much more than we anticipated. But also another thing that, that didn't help was the delay of getting out the bid was, we originally started with a different architect who was putting proposals, you know, we walked the buildings, kind of talked about our ideas. And that firm had two architects quit like that following week and they called and said, hey, we're not going to have a class, you could use a project. And we had to find a different architect, so that's also the reason when we first started this process back in. There's a few other updates before I go into the slides. On the Buildings Around Agenda tonight, there's a couple items that we're not discussing in Buildings Around Agenda, just want to give you the background. Buildings Around meaning that was, there's a purchase order for a new PA system for the Riverside campus. Right now, our John R. Riverside are separate systems and they're, they're antiquated. So we're looking at upgrading that system. It allows a little interface with the televisions here. And both buildings can be on one system or they can have a true building-wide communication. And just an overall, more robust system and analog system that's the place. Another purchase order on that agenda is for camera upgrades and replacements for the campus, Luth, Buckeye and Melridge. That was a little bit pricer, it's about a hundred and eighty-one thousand dollars a project. We got multiple quotes from various vendors. So at, at the campus, we're looking at replacing about sixty existing cameras and adding additional cameras. At Luth, adding more cameras and replacing some that are, are not performing the way they should be. Melridge is essentially our only system for the school. And at Buckeye, we're adding and replacing the cameras.
And, and it's, those are closed-circuit TVs, so that, that is all internal to the district. The, the video and things like that, that is all internal to the district.
It is all. And now the, those buildings will also be on one system. We're not going to log out of the line and go into another one if you want to. Those buildings are all. Another update to give, and some of our staff that are here in attendance will appreciate this one. The Lake County Schools Council, which is our health consortium, met yesterday and they approved a premium, another premium holiday for this June. So employees who participate in our, our, not in that condition, would not have any deductions on their pay. And the district would not have to pay any premiums for that month. So the employees will save money and also the district will save a little more than five hundred thousand dollars on their healthcare costs each year. So that's always good to see. That is actually the fourth year in a row that we've had that, which is unusual. A lot of this is caused due to COVID. This time, not really sure if I, but, you know, I would not anticipate that in the future. But we'll find out next year when that time comes. Another update I want to give is our discovery tours. Remember, it was two thousand eighteen at this point when the Chicago trip was canceled. Joseph Chippale, who had pled guilty to eighteen counts, including money laundering, bank fraud and making false statements under oath, sentenced to five years in prison in order to pay restitution. They did not specify what, what that amount is, but going to jail for five years for visiting the funds from the discovery tours. Also, a state budget update. The House passed the version of the budget. And I haven't got too many details on exactly what was all in there, but the main thing was the preschool funding plan is continuing to be phased in. But there, unlike the governor's proposal, they're actually updating the cost figures to two thousand twenty-two, where the governor's budget was two thousand eighteen million figures. So that should, for us, you know, we're guarantees, we probably don't see much of an increase anyways, but that'll always be more around the actual formula than Another update, SCV, we talked about doing electronic contracts, employment contracts, we're not shuffling paper and signing papers. Employees can have paperwork through email. The information is set up at SCV, they're working on building a system, so hopefully four to six weeks we'll have a training. This creates me and I will have to sign hundreds of sheets of paper every year.
Not in time for current contracts, I mean.
We're, we're hoping, I mean, after June meeting, but maybe July and August when we have the bulk of those contracts. I'm hoping, but, you know, you know, they, they do, they first come, first serve, so they're staying four to six weeks. I'm hoping it actually happens. It takes eight to four, then we'd still be signing on tape in the summer. Lastly, just before I go into the slides, I have a presentation next week for the Isle Association of School District officials. It's a lunch learn, preparing for your year in working, which is always fun, because, you know, finance agenda is always extremely lengthy. So it's a, we do a lunch learn series, it's monitoring for new treasures and there's a hundred and sixteen people invited that presentation. I'll be doing it on Zoom. Kind of goodbye, two cents on how much you prepare for. This is actually the third year I've, I've done this presentation, so it's been kind of like a building of the years. Just kind of helping the colleagues that are, that are, you know, newer to. On the slideshow tonight, I wanted to show Hannah Hart, obviously, the audit for fiscal year twenty-two was completed. We received the auditor's statement of word. Again, this is now the eighth or second year the district has received the word. What do you think I go forward? It's always a, it's always new requirements each year, so we always try to make sure we meet those and, you know, and self-audit ourselves before the actual audit and make sure we meet all the requirements. The Ohio Department of Education finally released the fiscal year twenty-two cup report. This is a report that has a lot of financial and other interesting statistics on it that they release each year. And one of the ones that we'll get is expenditure per pupil. Typically Riverside is either the second or third lowest in Lake County and twenty twenty-two, or currently third lowest in Lake County in our county. It's six before, spent per student. The state average is twelve thousand eight hundred. We try to run efficiently, but that jeopardize the quality of education. Then I have a few more slides here just to kind of run through real quick. If you recall that in October, I went through the various funds of the district, you know, we typically focus on, on the general fund, the financial forecast and mostly the general fund, joint financing district fund. And I, at that time, I was going to go through the remaining funds that I did not cover during that meeting in December. Obviously, things happened and finally we were able to put it together for tonight's meeting. So the, the funds I was wanting to kind of run through real quick tonight are, what's nice about school districts is every fund number is uniform across all school districts. So for us, we have a first fund, four fifty-one network subsidy. It's that same fund number for all school districts in Ohio. And so four fifty-one is a, it's a, the account for money we get for Ohio K twelve network subsidies, so we're allocated eighteen hundred dollars per building. So we get ten thousand eight hundred dollars and that's used for, to go towards our annual internet service cost. Another fund, four sixty-sevens, we call student bonus and success funds. These funds were awarded back in two thousand nineteen, nineteen twenty, twenty twenty-one fiscal years through the governor drawing its first budget. And we have a few other funds left, about thirty-three thousand dollars in a fund that we respect this year. Those are, these funds have now been incorporated, the preschool funding is playing a part of our typical state funding. No longer accounted for in a separate fund, it goes to the general fund. That was a two-year time that we had in a separate fund. And then Fund four ninety-nine is miscellaneous state grants. We started the year twenty-three thousand, a hundred ninety-five dollars. That was an attorney general safety grant we had for last year. And then this year, we're awarded a fifteen thousand dollar HBAC grant for purchase filters for community C systems. So that's what runs through that, that fund. We're waiting to hear back, we apply for two to four. There's another attorney general safety grant for this year that has not been awarded yet. Would like to get that one. But also another new grant that was, I think it was twenty thousand dollar safety education grant that we applied for and they have not announced any funding on that one yet. That was too much for the first, so we're just waiting to hear back. And then so any fund that starts in the four hundred theme is always state ranks. The five hundred funds are federal funds. And so we have what we call the S R fund, elementary and secondary school, emergency B fund. And this is funds that were allocated during the COVID pandemic through the three stimulus packages that were approved. We currently have about eight hundred some thousand left in that, allocated for that fund. It's, you know, it's all on a personal basis. We don't get the funds in front, it's actually spent. That fund, we have five different special cross centers and forty-six different budget accounts in there. Five sixteen is IDEA part B, special education, it's used to, you know, student disabilities. And that's averages about one point five million a year. And we have a hundred and twenty-six different budget accounts in that fund. Five fifty-one is limited English proficiency fund, basically a fund for students with limited English proficiency, pretty self-explanatory. We just see about twenty-seven thousand dollars a year in that fund in a lot of the budget accounts. Fund five seventy-two is Title One Target Assistance and that's used to, to, to handle the grant funds that we need for economically disadvantaged students. We usually receive just over seven hundred thousand dollars in that fund and we have about fifty-five budget accounts. Five eighty-four is Title Four Part A, supporting student support and academic enrichment. Basically to increase capacity in schools, provide students with access to well-rounded education, improve student conditions for student learning, improve use of technology. We give on sixty-five thousand dollars a year in that fund. Five eighty-seven is the Early Childhood Special Education Fund. This is funding that goes toward a preschool program for students in ages three through five. It's around sixty-six thousand a year in twelve budget accounts. Five ninety is Title Two A, improving teacher quality. And this is used to increase student achievement and also improve quality of practices of teachers. We typically use this for professional development. We have two hundred and twenty thousand dollars in there, about thirty-two budget accounts. And lastly, this Fund 599, this is federal grants. This is just for the federal grants that were categorized elsewhere. And this one's mostly that $4,000 school safety grant this year. There's some Lincoln grant funds, we have a community activity fund, we have home books and hotspots. So I'm going to do that pretty quickly. Any questions on this fund? It's kind of want to go through them quickly to kind of see that, you know, overall, you know, general funds are mainly fine. About 40% of our funding comes to be used for different funds, you know, permanent community, financial community, athletic funding, and then these state and federal grant funds. And then for future treasure updates, May is the five-year forecast, which we're always excited about. June is.
I look forward to that meeting twice a year.
And then June, is this the, this is the, I'll probably be sure to report about a general in that one. But shall I always review the results of this meeting?
Mr. Placko, when will we target, going back out to the different commission readings to give an update on state's schools?
I figure once we get past the approval of the five-year forecast, which will be the 25th, we'll work on starting to schedule those meetings. And Dr. Matino and I have already talked, and he's going to come with me to do those again. Now I give a financial update, also introduce the superintendent.
Thank you.
I look forward to it.
Thank you. Okay, that brings us to public participation. Anyone wishing to address the Board of Education will be recognized by the Board President. Speakers are requested to identify themselves and their topic. Comments are limited to three minutes. Anyone have public comment? Yes, sir.
John, here's a pain for the township. First of all, I want to thank you, Mr. Fishel, for being a good steward of taxpayer dollars. If you look up the definition of good steward, a steward means being responsible for something that does not belong to you. And making a decision on how to spend taxpayer dollars, you should be making the best decision. And anybody, I was in the private sector of a Fortune 100 company. I was management for many years and had thousands of customers that spend millions of dollars each month. And the thing about it is, you are responsible for the spending of this. And we used to have a SME, Subject Matter Expert. If there were certain subjects, you've got an expert, just like the jail. I talk about the jail. Captain Brooks, who's the jail administration, as James would know, and Sheriff Neil Bruner, used to be the jail administrator. Who would know more about the jail than, the Lake County jail than them? Now the Ohio revised code, as you know, the state constitution is the highest state law. Ohio revised code, then you have the administrative code. And I looked up boards and so forth, what your responsibilities are in all of them. But anyhow, beside the point, I'm just saying, I want to thank you, Mr. Fishel, for standing up for the students, the parents, and the taxpayers. I thank you. And someday, I hope, Riverside can say, "We're the best school in the county." Then I'll say, "We're doing a good job." Right now, Ohio ranks 33rd in this, in the country, in this country, the state of Ohio does. 17th in the world, China, India, or way up there. And there was a comment made at a past meeting about taxpayer dollars. And Mr. Chip Canetti was here and made, and a comment was made, "Well, I don't think it's right that all the communities should be paying taxpayers and having to possibly expand the schools." That's totally inappropriate, in my opinion. And I'm sharing that with many people, so the people really know what's going on. I mean, some of my money, I pay federal income tax and go into China. But that's what happens when you pay your taxes. So I am just saying is that we need not only do you not have to make decisions, but you made the best, smart decisions, because you are the stewards of our taxpayer dollars. And every two, four, and six years, we, the people of this country, get to hire and fire people that all five years worked for. You work for the people, nobody else, but for the people out here that live in the Painesville Township School District. I'm asking you, please, to do so. Thank you. And one last thing, when you get a grant, as I've checked with the state and the federal, there's always strings attached. And they usually have their legal department go over that. So make sure when you accept a grant, you know what strings are attached with the money. Thank you.
Any additional public comment? Yes, sir.
Hi, I'm Brian Locke. I am the president of the chapter, Lake Geoga Chapter of Sleep in Heavenly Peace. We provide beds to kids who are otherwise sleeping on the floor. I'm here today, hopefully, to get some buy-in on a fundraising event that I'm trying to do across all the school districts within Lake Geoga and far eastern zip codes of Pahovega County. Basically, it's called Pajamas Across America. I'm just one chapter of 300 across America for Sleep in Heavenly Peace. And really, all it is, is the kids pay a buck a quarter, whatever, to wear pajamas for a specific day. You guys pick the day. I don't care. Except it has to be between October 1st and November 30th. And basically, the funding is to allow the chapter to continue to deliver beds for kids. We started delivering beds in April of 2019, and we've delivered 490 beds so far. And that would include the bed frame, mattress sheets, pillows, comforter, so a complete bed. And we make the frame through build days that we have with the community. So my team provides lumber, machinery, and the expertise, and we teach the community, members of the community, how to make the beds. We don't let them use saws, but they can use all the other stuff. But, you know, we're having, and if you want to see what we do, we're having a build at the Manner United Methodist Church on May 6th, which apparently is prom, so that's probably out. But we're having, we're also have, well, we'll build 60 beds there. And then we're having one on May 13th under the grandstands at the Gerald County Fairgrounds with 4H. They're going to build 40 beds. So if you want to see how we do it and how we get the community involved, that's it. Obviously, it's not cheap building beds. To purchase lumber for 60 beds is about $4,000. And even though we have deals with mattresses and stuff, buying 50 mattresses is well over $3,000. So what I'm, what I'm saying is, I need, I need buy-in from you guys, and I also need a contact at Riverside if you agree to it, so that I can have my team work with you guys too. I got 30 seconds. I've never done this before.
We're sold.
I have your, I have your mail, and I did not get a chance to respond yet, so I will forward it.
Wait, here's my, my time.
The toy.
No, but it really, this is supposed to be fun. I can guarantee you, since we've delivered nearly 500 beds, I can guarantee you, we've delivered beds to this district. We just, we do a lot. We're out of beds now, which is why we're building 100 beds in two weeks. I'm out of time.
I apologize. I will share your email with the central office, so we can get it across the district, okay?
Sure, no, that's great. And I have my card, I have a brochure.
Do you have a website that you could, do a website that we could at least promote?
Absolutely. Do I get enough three minutes? Oh, thank you. Yeah, it's, the website for the organization is wwwshpbeds.org. And my Facebook page for Lake Geoga Chapter is @shplakegeoga. So if you want to go there, you can see what we've done and the pictures we have. But yeah, what we're trying to do is get out of storage units and into a home, so that we can have all our equipment in one place, and people come to us to do the builds instead of me running rider trucks and packing everything up. So that's my goal. And you are now the third district that I.
Well, thank you. We have hats after a few minutes. Any other public comment? Yes, sir.
Chris Weiss from Leirae. In regards to, I came into the middle of the discussion about the window, so I missed part of that. I apologize. Bev and I were at a previous meeting earlier. But anyway, in regards to the initiative to get the engineering study, I, you may be aware, my company was one that provided a bid on that. Whether I'm, whether my company's chosen to participate in any way or not, I'd like to offer the materials that Scott Fishel and I created last summer, which is a photo archive of about 4,400 pictures and over 100 pages of data taken on virtually every space in the John R. Williams and Riverside buildings. I'd like to offer to donate that for the purpose of whichever company gets that contract to get a jump start on being able to do the Phase One data collection necessary to do the analysis of this campus. Because I feel that the benefit of that outweighs holding it back and no sense in reinventing the wheel on the work that was already done. So if Mr. Placko or Superintendent Kales reach out to me and ask for that, be happy to provide it. Secondly, it's my, I feel it's my sad duty to inform you guys publicly, and I've reached out to a couple people on this earlier, that for the entire time that Scott Fishel has been a member of this school board, he has not maintained the confidence of your executive sessions to the extent that he has disclosed virtually the content of all of your executive meetings to myself and other parties. And he's been doing that since he became a board member. I reached out to Superintendent Kales and I also talked with Mr. Hack about it. I feel that this should be brought forth into the public light. I don't know how you may choose to deal with that information, but if there's any subsequent investigation, I would be happy to participate and comply with that. Finally, Mr. Fishel has also recently been involved in the theft of a petition for candidacy for a school board. A felony criminal complaint has been filed with Lake County Sheriff's Department, and I'm told that it is going to be acted upon. Thank you.
Any other public comments?
Well, I would like to have a comment on that. Captain Fishel at Conover Township. I don't know if everybody knows that Mr. Weiss has become very adversarial, has been calling people all through Lake County, trying to put a scar on Scott Fishel's name. Now, I probably sound like I'm defending my husband to some degree. I am, because I have been in Chris Weiss's presence when he has lied, he has had. And I even hate to say this, because everybody does this nowadays, but it's true. Very racist comments that I was like appalled at, and someone said to me, "Hey, what goes on here stays here." So for Mr. Weiss to be pointing fingers at criminal, who by the way, has a criminal record, 18 counts, and one is forgery and one is tampering with evidence, four is domestic violence. I don't want it to bring this up in public, but you want to spread your lies, so I'm going to go ahead and spread the truth that Mr. Weiss has a pretty bad record, and he's been in this room right here arguing with every school board member, shouting, causing displays of anger, which he has. And so believe what you like, but I know the truth.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Thank you. That brings us to our consent agenda. The first on is Finance and Audit.
Sure, we have a motion to approve the items listed on the Finance and Audit Consent Agenda as recommended by the Treasurer, Agent A. Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. I would just like to read the donations. We have 30 gift herds, which we donated from 1920 coffee and food for the senior coffee meeting. And we have a donation from the Rotary Club of Painesville to Riverside Drama. So I'd like to thank those organizations for their donations to the district. Is there any other discussion on Items A through I?
Hearing none, can we call the roll, Mr. Placko?
Governor.
Aye.
Laura Gnisby.
Aye.
Lynn Grassi.
Aye.
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Motion carried. That brings us to the consent agenda for personnel.
Sure, we have a motion to approve the items listed on the Personnel Consent Agenda as recommended by Superintendent Aids. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion on those? And keeping in mind, we have an additional item that goes under Item E. Hearing no discussion, can we call the roll, Mr. Placko?
Laura Gnisby.
Aye.
Lynn Grassi.
Aye.
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Governor.
Aye.
Motion carried. Brings us to the consent agenda for Curriculum and Programming.
I make a motion to approve Items A through H on the Curriculum Consent Agenda. And do I have a second?
I'll second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, can I take the roll?
Lynn Grassi.
Aye.
Scott Fishel.
Aye.
Tom Heck.
Aye.
Governor.
Aye.
Laura Gnisby.
Aye.
Motion carried.
So there's item I. There is item I, and I would ask.
Just make the motion.
I make a motion to. Yeah, make the, make a motion for the resolution to remove responsive classroom and all present materials involving responsive classroom from the classrooms in all Riverside local school district buildings, and to cease any further training and or instruction involving responsive classroom. Do I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
So I'd just like to say that in my tenure at Riverside, the, you know, there, you try to make the best call you can, but I would tell you that I have regretted the fact that I voted for responsive classroom. I'm sure that there are some positive aspects to it, but I can believe that, that there are other professional development curriculum and programs that would allow for the continued, you know, professional development of the staff. And, and, you know, it's, responsive classroom has an element of SEL, which I am against. It's my understanding, we're not really using that at this point, but it is something that, that I wish were not included in our curriculum. I, I don't like, I personally don't like the fact that we are supporting an organization that has SEL as part of it, even if we're not utilizing that. So, so I am definitely in favor of removing it. I do believe that, as I said, we can find other professional development, you know, programs that would be suitable for Riverside and get us what we need and not have the SEL component. So that's my perspective.
I believe there is a requirement from the state that we do have some type of social-emotional learning. Is that correct? There are standards that we are, that we have to teach to the whole child, correct?
Just to make it clear too, this is kind of a different type of resolution. So be mindful, the way I understand it, if you vote Aye, you want to get rid of it. If you vote May, you want to keep it. Which is different than.
As long as we all understand.
But is my understanding of the SEL is that they are, they are standards, but they're not funded and not enforced? Because they're definitely different local control. There are different levels of SEL depending on the district. So, so I think that that is a in play as well. So I do believe that we have the wherewithal as a board of local control to, to, to pursue that as we see fit.
Can I ask what's changed since the last couple times we've discussed this? Has anything changed or anything else come to light?
It is, you know, I, I believe that it's important that we have a statement as a board on what we want to do.
But haven't we done that like three times already? Didn't we say the last time that we voted on this, we were, unless something new came up, we were not going to do this again?
We never formally voted on it.
Because there was not a resolution.
Did, and.
To vote on it.
Right, so that's, this is, it's bringing up to remove it.
But again, what has changed that has come back to the table? Because we said.
We said we wouldn't do it again.
We said we wouldn't do this.
We wouldn't do what?
Bring something back to the table unless something's changed.
I'm sorry, there were two people talking. Could you, one person speak?
No, we specifically said last time, and you, we all, all decided that unless something changed, we were not going to bring this up again, and nothing has changed. No new information has come to light. No new information has come to light, nothing is different, just wanting to bring it out again, so that we all had to vote on it again.
And even during the previous time we discussed this, we asked for additional information, we asked for the resources to the material you provided, you did not provide that. We asked for evidence from the curriculum, or, it's not even curriculum, from the professional development, what was bad about it. We asked for evidence that says this is why it's bad. Instead of judging it by its label, what is bad with what they're doing? Parkside employs a morning meeting, which is part of what they've learned here. I've gone, I've squashed it, I don't know if you saw it when you went by. But it's a meeting that engages our students and gets them ready for learning for the day. So we're saying if this is approved, they no longer can do that, that you cannot have your morning meeting. And it's something that they credit to the success that their school's having.
That, it may be what you're saying is true, except for the last part, where we are certainly able to pursue other professional development, which may have elements of that as well. It's not that we're saying there's no professional development, it's that we need to, we could choose other programs that provide professional development. And to Mrs. Harden's point, we did bring it up, but this board, the board that originally put, that approved the responsive classroom, is not this board, that was the previous board. This board has not voted on it. And again, I did vote for it back in the previous board, I regret it, and I'd like to correct that vote.
Now, to answer your question about information, I had given everyone the presentation that I had given in the curriculum committee that outlined the issues, and so I handed that to each individual board member. So you're saying you have not seen that?
I've seen it, I asked for the resources. When I read information, I want to know where it's coming from, because I want to know what perspective it's being written in. And we asked for that two times via email, so it's public record. And I asked also for the evidence within the actual professional development, two times, that you feel is wrong and is tied to social emotional or whatever you think is wrong with it, okay? And we never received that. So multiple times, we've requested additional information to consider, to try to work as a board, and it's not been provided. And it hasn't been to date. I don't know if anybody's received anything.
Well, I've discussed it and spoken on it extensively.
Mr. Fishel, you're not a professional.
And for you, I'm not a professional?
In social emotional learning, are you a professional in social emotional learning?
What does that have to do with removing the program?
Because you're telling us to believe what you have given us without resources. And I'm sorry, that's not responsible of me as a board member.
Okay, so the information that I gave you, some of the pages had resources attached to it, and also, if you wanted me to go back and get every single item from every single website that I had gotten, what I said was, you can simply go to responsive classroom, you can go to Castle, you can go to other entities, and you can see what the program is, where it came from. It originated at the Frankfurt School, all this is Marxist and socialism, okay? So the idea is to bring it into the school and have a program that socializes the kids through social emotional learning, instead of educating the kids on information, is not appropriate, I believe. And so I am making a motion to remove it from the schools, because I believe it's harmful, and it's a harmful first step. And we have Dr. Patino here, who works at Shaker, and he might be able to expand a little further, that at Shaker, it was brought in at a low level, and at Shaker, they now have a full-blown social emotional learning CRT, basically, program going on there, including a DIE person, a diversity, inclusion, and the E is socialism, equity and socialism, the same thing. So at Shaker, it started out at a very low level, and now it's full-blown. Here, trying to nip it in the bud and remove it, because we don't want it here, and, and the people of this district do not want it here.
So can I ask a question, once we vote on this agenda item? If it doesn't go your way, are we going to have to vote on this again?
Ms. Grassy, I'm looking at a vote on this right now?
Yes.
And that's all we're discussing right now.
Yeah, I just want to know, are we going to have to vote on it again if it doesn't go your way? Because this is what happens all the time, I'm just asking, like, we've discussed this, and now we're discussing it now, and I have no problem with that, we can vote. However the vote goes, are we going to have to discuss this again?
So we have never voted on this?
So we're going to vote, we're going to vote on it now, I'm asking you a question. Are we going to have to do this again, if it doesn't go your way?
And that's an inappropriate statement, and it's not worthy of discussion.
You know, you know.
I have a question for Dr. Malacher. So you are the person in the room who I suspect is most familiar with professional development training. Are there other professional development programs that could be potentially implemented, potentially implemented, which would allow for the professional development that you believe is appropriate for our teaching staff, but would not have elements of SEL in it?
I, this is social emotional learning. So when you talk about gathering kids on the rug and teaching them conflict management, that's what falls under that umbrella. So when you ask, are there ways to train teachers on how to work with students that don't incorporate social emotional learning, those two things are not exclusive. So if you were to say to me, Melissa, we don't like XYZ, we don't want, we don't want equity training, and I could say, we don't do that. We don't want this, and I could say, okay, we can make sure that we don't do that. You have, there is a very broad umbrella of social emotional learning, of which we have put responsive classroom under. I don't, there is no program that you're going to say, let's teach teachers how to work better with students that don't incorporate, I mean, communication skills. That falls under the SEL umbrella. Conflict management, that falls under the SEL umbrella. So we can't separate those two things so that clearly as you would like it to be. You, I understand, again, we may disagree on...
But here's the point, is communications and getting along with people existed in our curriculum, and I'm sure in professional development, for the term SEL, which does have communist roots, was brought into place. So they've usurped some of the things that are fundamentally basic to our ability to teach. But the problem that I have, and perhaps Mr. Fishel has as well, is that it doesn't stop there. Instead of focusing on the individual, it ends up trying to take away, ultimately, it tries to prevent people from having independent thoughts. And it does that by, you know, we have kindness, you know, be known for your kindness and grace, which is a great saying overall. But they are using that as a segue to prevent criticism from things that maybe perhaps you disagree with.
I don't know who "they" is. So I don't know, I can't protect myself, our students, our community from "they." All I can do is tell you what we are doing and how teachers use this in the classroom. I thought perhaps you could see it when you were at Buckeye that morning, when you spent the day at Buckeye.
If you may recall, I mean, I saw a number of things.
Okay, if you were there in the morning, because that's pretty much how they all started.
Okay, but it was, as you may recall, it was a K on Tom.
Yes, it was.
Everybody must know, so I don't, I don't know what, no one explained to me exactly this is...
Well, that might be a good thing, because it's integrated into what we're doing, and it's part of our...
So what I'm trying to differentiate, there are elements that I'm sure are covered that are fundamental to effective teaching, there's no doubt. I believe that SEL is usurping some of those, and it's a segue to other things that ultimately do not produce a free and functioning individual, which I ultimately believe is very important for us to have in place at Riverside, that we want to graduate citizens who are capable individuals, self-thinking and respect for everybody, but they don't need to be, if you don't respect somebody's choice, while you need to coexist with them, I believe, it doesn't mean that you are wrong or unkind if you think that they are wrong. And that's where SEL, in one way, comes into play, ultimately, so...
I don't disagree with anything you just said. I want to make sure our students are critically thinking, I want to make sure they can get out inside and make decisions. But when I saw what's going on with some of these tools, and when I went through the professional development, I went through the two books, there's nothing in there that's saying you can't disagree with somebody, it's actually teaching them that they are okay to disagree with.
Yes, yes.
So that's what I'm saying, there's nothing here, there's no evidence in what we're doing that says it's, it's being ruined by a label, a label that's been applied to it, that...
There's, I believe there's more to it, and so I think at this point, I don't know that we are, is there any more discussion?
Well, I would add something. In the training manual for teachers, it specifically says and states that the company wants the teachers to spend as much time on social emotional learning as it does on, as they do on education. It's in the manual.
Can I address that? It says that those two things are equally important, it does not say that you should spend the same amount of time. It is equally important that I feed my dog as I feed my children, but I don't spend the same amount of time on those two things. And I'm not being, I'm not trying to be funny, I'm making a point of, things can be equally important, but not take the same amount of time out of your day. So that's what it says, it says they are equally important, not that we should spend the same amount of time. Because no way can we possibly spend the same amount of time on this as we do on academics, because academics are our primary responsibility in what we do. So I just wanted to clarify that, because it's been said a couple of times, and that's not what it says. It says they're equally important.
And so this program comes right out of Marxism, and it identifies throughout the literature, equity, equity, equity. And if you go to the responsive classroom website, you will see that continually stated. Now that we are claiming that we're not doing that, does not take anything away from the program that we've brought in, I would like to remove that program and that information. Additionally, what is available to teachers is ongoing education, such that you can go and get further information from them and further training. Are you aware of that, Dr. Malacher?
Yes, we have not got anybody request to do additional training. The training that we did is the last time we did training, and no one has requested it.
And that isn't available to any individual teacher as they deem they want to do that.
And they could do that on their own, within a program.
Exactly. And so what I'm saying is, this kind of training and teaching and indoctrination of Marxism, I believe needs to be removed, and I'll restate, the majority of the community wants this removed.
I disagree with that, I have multiple emails, you have no way to prove that.
That's such a blanket statement, you have no idea about.
So I am stating that the majority of the community wants it removed.
You're...
You can't see that, you don't know that.
One person in our audience that does not want it removed.
And you can disagree with that? And that is my statement.
All right, so I don't know that there's anything else, is there any other discussion on this? But just to remind you, an "A" means we are removing it, an "N" means we are keeping it. It's your call for roll.
Can you take the roll?
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Tom Heck?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Nay.
Lori Coniskie?
Nay.
Linda Grassy?
Nay.
Motion failed. That brings us to the consent agenda for buildings and grounds and operations.
Motion to approve the items listed on the buildings and grounds. Consent agenda items A and B is recommended by the superintendent, may I have a second please?
I'll second that.
Thank you very much. Any discussion? Mr. Placko reviewed both items, any questions?
All of them.
You call the roll. Tom Heck?
Aye.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Lori Coniskie?
Aye.
Linda Grassy?
Aye.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Motion carried. Board of Education update?
I would just like to congratulate the two teachers that we have that are for Teacher of the Year. I understand those, there's a regional decision and then a statewide decision, I don't know when those are, but best of luck to them.
Well, also congratulations, I saw that we had 90 of our students about get accepted to Auburn for next year, and they do a signing day there now. I'm glad those kids, so super excited to see so many of our students getting the opportunity to be at Auburn.
Any other Board of Education update?
You say to come?
I have one, Mr. Chikin was here, we were talking about the awareness program in Bang, the contact, and we have to push it to start next year.
Thank you. All right, that brings us to executive session. Motion to adjourn to executive session at 8:47 PM to discuss personnel matters, appointment and/or employment, discipline, and security arrangements. Can I get a second? Thank you, Mr. Hack. Call the roll, please.
Jennifer Harden?
Aye.
Lori Coniskie?
Aye.
Linda Grassy?
Aye.
Scott Fishel?
Aye.
Tom Heck?